Okay, folks, at 6:00 PM. I would like to begin this caucus session. We have one item under the old business this evening which pertains to the public hearing we just had a few minutes ago. We'll add that this evening. And also, we have a couple additions. Mayor, do you want to give your addition? You want to put on the agenda this evening? Just tell me what you want to put on.
I would like to -- a motion appointing Dennis Galvin to the Parks, Recreation and Cemetery Board.
Okay. That'll be -- we'll make that C under new business, okay? And we're also gonna put a motion before A pertaining to A. And Mr. Tish will do that this evening too, and also he will read A too. Okay, Mr.?
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Go ahead.
Approach counsel and also ask a question. This Item A as it stands now is an ordinance that we voted on last council meeting.
Correct.
And I question whether it even should even be on here again. It was defeated.
It was defeated. And the motion that needs to be made before you would see it on the agenda is a motion to reconsider it. It would have to be made by one of the prevailing voters. There's a motion to reconsider, and that is passed by members of the council. Then it can be reconsidered by council, but in only that instance.
Gotcha.
It just can't reappear.
I would like to remove the Item A as it stands. If anybody else has any objections to doing that?
I don't have any objections to removing it. Are you making a motion that we voted on?
No, a motion just to remove Item A.
During the caucus, I mean, you're entitled to adjust the agenda. If you want to have council consider removing old business Item A, then I think they can consider that now and then make a motion to that effect from the beginning of the meeting.
What's your question? Does anybody on council oppose that?
Yes.
I oppose that.
Okay.
You have a comment?
I oppose that too, also.
I don't oppose it.
I don't oppose it. It was my intention to place a motion on the floor this evening to reconsider the ordinance authorizing city manager to borrow up to $1,240,000 for the specific purpose of allowing council member Dragich to vote on that motion. He was not here at the previous meeting, and that motion was defeated on a two-to-two vote. And my only reason in bringing that forward was allow him the opportunity to vote on that motion because I thought it was significant enough of an item to have all members of council vote on.
I would like to comment on this. What you have here, if you look at it quickly, you can sit in your chair back there and conclude that we're just going to keep bringing back motions that get shot down over and over and over again. That is not the case. As a matter of fact, the opposite is the case here. We voted on this, and it ended up in a tie. One of the people that opposed it was councilman Tish, who wants the full input of all of council, all five members, to determine whether this should go or not. I can only admire him for putting this back on to get the views of five people rather than four people. I know where he stands. I was for it. I cannot recommend that you bring it back, but a person who was voted against it initially is the one making the motion to bring it back. I have nothing but respect for him for that. We have differences of opinion, and I don't want to go into my cross-the-gold speech again. You have some very, very diverse personalities and opinions on this council, and that is healthy for the City of Canfield.
I just, in the sake of time, we took a straw poll and three opposed it being on the agenda, so therefore I just -- it's probably redundant to ask for the motion to reconsider and then vote on it, in my opinion. That's just me.
Then why don't we open up the meeting, and after we conduct the item number seven, recognition of persons, why don't you make a motion then to remove it from the agenda until we have it on the record?
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. Now, I guess at this point now, Mr. Tish, would you like to do the motion to reconsider? Or if we are gonna do that?
Are we gonna open the meeting now? I mean?
All I'm doing right now is just working on the agenda at this point, Mr. Tish, right now, trying to figure -- pointing.
I had indicated that I would be willing to introduce a motion to reconsider.
Okay, thank you. And you'll do the A, B part also.
Yes, I will, if that motion passes.
Yes. And B, I don't know, you want to do that for me, please?
Yes.
And we have a new motion, as mentioned by the mayor earlier. You see, you're taking care of that.
I'll do that.
Okay. Are there any other changes or deviations from the agenda as we have this evening?
Excuse me, Mr. President. Did you assign someone to read old business A?
I did not. Okay, very well said. I think we have Mr. -- Mr. Morve? So that's the Paul First Mayor. Mr. Morve, you want to do that?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tish, for that. Okay. That should be it, I think, this time. Okay, are there any other changes to the agenda? Okay? Thank you. Okay, let me -- please, I'll stand for pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, ever and ever. Thank you. Okay, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragich?
Yes.
Mr. Kuntzar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tish?
Here. All members are here this evening. Under item four, if you received this from April 2nd and April 16th minutes, are there any revisions to those minutes? Mr. Tish?
I have a correction to the minutes of April 16th. On page 12, there are two references to motions indicating five votes in the affirmative on each of those two motions. I think that the roll call will indicate that we had four members of council at that meeting and not five.
Right.
I think that should -- those two -- the roll call on those two motions should be changed to reflect four votes, yes.
Okay. Any else on those minutes?
Also, on page 16.
Page 16.
We have two motions that also indicated five votes in the affirmative, again, when we had four.
Okay.
Those are the only two items I have.
Okay, let the motion -- let the minutes be approved as amended by Mr. Tish this Thank you. Under reading of communications, Mr. Tish?
I have no communication.
Mr. Dragich?
No communications.
Mr. Morve?
Yes, I do. A citizen from Edward Street had called, and the -- in the evening, when the buses come in to pick up the children at the middle school, they pull into Edwards, they turn around, and they come back out. And in observation, there's children walking, but there's no sidewalks. They're walking on the roads. And this citizen was expressing concern that, you know, perhaps we may be a little bit more safety-conscious there. I don't know. Maybe perhaps we could look at that.
Okay, I could address -- we do have an application into the Ohio Department of Transportation under the Safe Routes to Schools, which would address that, as well as some of the links between the neighborhoods and Hilltop School. And we're still waiting for word as to whether that will get funded or not. If successful, it's a 100% funded project where they'll install sidewalks that link neighborhoods to schools. Yeah, that's one of the target areas was this end of town and the Skyline, Callahan, that area of Hilltop, it's just Hilltop.
Joe, any timeframe, timeline to, you know, pass on?
They were anticipating getting word back from ODOT around late summer, so it'd be July or August before we appear.
Okay.
And the school project wouldn't take place until 2015.
Yeah. Okay. Is there anything we can do in the meantime to, you know, be concerned about this area?
I mean? Other than, council certainly can get a price to see what it costs to put sidewalk in that immediate area, act on it independently.
Yeah.
Be 100% that city fund.
Yeah. We've worked with the school in this situation too, with the buses picking up and dropping off and all that.
Yeah, initially, they had the plan was set up to do all of their bus pickups in the back of the school, and that failed miserably. And they moved that back to the front, put all of the student pickups or family pickups in the back side, so. There is a lot of activity with this school showing back there. But we do have kind of a quasi-designated traffic movement for pedestrians going down Edwards and crossing near the Presbyterian Church, I believe it is, and we have an officer there when they're available. And that's the only, basically, designated traffic area that we patrol or look at.
If we had the school have crossing guards just stationed along there, because it seems like there is a lot of traffic coming and going and then children walking, I don't know, maybe we should have some kind of crossing guards, if not the police, you know, maybe some crossing guards or something that would?
Set up a meeting with the superintendent and discuss it.
Sure.
See if we can go anywhere with that.
The corner of 224 and Broad Street, that post, we've talked about that post. Is that on our property or whose property? I mean?
It's in the city right away.
Yeah.
Actually, I never did find out a reason for that.
Yeah. I mean, it just seems, the way it looks, it looks like it might be dangerous.
Yeah. We were talking about possibly having our public -- of course, it's some kind of monument or property marker, but I've not had anybody identify exactly what it is. Chuck, if you've ever had any course of answer?
I had always been told that that was actually the corner property pin for that location. Now, whether that's true or not, I don't know, but that's what I'd been told.
I haven't been able to verify that. Anything, if we want to maintain it, we can lease concrete the bottom of it, because there's concrete on both ends and rods through the middle of it.
Yeah, there's rebar hanging, hanging out. Yeah.
I certainly didn't want to deface the monument.
Yeah.
So I haven't been able to get any verification on that.
And last of all, the Phase Two, I haven't noticed any activity in the last couple days. Is there a projection of when we're gonna have completion on this?
Well, again, the weather kind of stalled things. They had gotten some of the base down for the sidewalk on the west side of the street, and with the rain, it's kind of saturated that area because it's sitting in the slag, and you don't want to put concrete on top of it until you're sure it's been compacted and stable, so we're again up against it with the rainfall that we've had. The other issue, I'm just surprised of the cost for the fabric that we had talked about a few weeks ago, and I'll be putting that in the memo this week with proposed cost for that or whatever we want to proceed with that.
Okay. Any flooding issues that we had this past drain?
Yeah, there -- in the memo, I listed there were three calls, and they've been three that we've talked about in the past. And I see there are some folks here from the Chapel Hill area. That one has some merit, and again, we talked about this in past years. The Chapel Lane is elevated, and the road's kind of super-elevated to the pushing the water to the south. Their properties are on the south side of the road, and they actually sit lower than the road. Over the years, that road has been paved, and there's been no grinding that's taken place, and now they -- there's only about an inch to an inch and a half of curb reveal. When we get these heavy storms, water hops the curve and enters their properties, and some explaining this properly or not. We had MS go out there a year or so ago and just came up with some ideas, the ability of putting in two catch basins to intercept that water before it hops over the curb, the ability to just put in a new curb or in that section to direct the flow down the street further where it can go into the storm source, or a re-grinding of the roadway to bring it down to the original design. The two I had mentioned previously were in the 10,000 to 15,000 dollar range are the preferred alternatives. The reshaping and reprofiling road would be a major concern. But again, there's been no action taken by council in the past years over the same issue.
Okay, thank you.
That's all. I have a comment on your question about Edwards Street and the traffic and the sidewalks. I have firsthand experience as an accelerated policeman. We would go up there the first week of school in September, and you have a police car parked there, and you have a uniformed policeman there. And what we're trying to do is to train parents how not to run over other people's kids when they're picking up their kids. And it's quite a chore, to tell you the truth. But what I wanted to let you know, John, the school has their principal out there, they have teachers out there, they literally have the crosswalk guy there to control traffic, and they do a nice job. They coordinate getting the buses filled, they coordinate getting the buses out onto the street. When they get to 224, that's a whole different problem. If there's a policeman available, you light it up and you get those buses out quickly. But the school is trying, and they're doing a nice job. It's sometimes trying to get the parent to move their finale off of my crosswalk. Sometimes you'll run into somebody just doesn't quite understand why they can't park their car right across that crosswalk. The school is trying, I will tell you that. Oh, by the way, we go back in February to retrain the parents how not to run over other people's kids while they're picking up their kids, because they forget from September to February. We're there for an entire week.
Okay, Mayor, you still have the mic. Go ahead. You're up next. You guys want us to be about?
Is that the Dennis Galvin?
No, 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 no.
Oh, no, no, no.
Communications, communications.
Okay, we had in the month of April.
April? No, no. Pass up committees, report. This is just communications. Communications, you have.
I just communicated.
That's all you have? Okay, thank you. You see, you speak on behalf of the Senate, so why wasn't you here in your office, Sean? Thank you. All right, this is the reports of the community's managing, Mr. Dragich. Your reports from your committee, did? No. Okay. Mr. Morve?
The Fire District is gonna have interviews this next week for an architect. We've identified three or four possible architects that can do the job and help us with the punch list and get the project going. It's gonna require interviewing now these three or four candidates, coming up with the one that we feel that can best work with us, and so we're proceeding with that. Interviews will be this week. Probably by the end of the week, we'll have an architect identified. So that project is moving along. Mayor Goodness, Morve?
Question?
Yes, sir.
There was some legal issue there? Do you get that resolved or between candidates or something like that?
There was a discussion whether or not we wanted to interview the possible candidates, and it came out that at first we were not gonna have an interview. We thought we had identified an architect. But then because of the information that surfaced, we've gone back now and said, no, we're gonna interview them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Reno?
Yeah, I did have a couple pieces of correspondence. I had gotten a notice from the Canfield Rotary of a Small Business Breakfast on Thursday, May 22nd. They have some speakers coming in to talk about some of the state programs that are available for small business owners, and wanted us to get the word out on that, as well as anybody on council that might be interested in attending that. And that's at Fair Park Community Center again on Thursday, May 22nd at 7:30 AM. We also received letters from the American Legion, Post 177, an invitation to the mayor and council, as well as all of the city employees, to attend the Memorial Day services on the Village Green, and that's set for Monday, May 26th at 10:00 AM. That being said, my report, we have three items on the agenda, or four items now on the agenda, the rezoning of the land on Fairground, which we had the public hearing for earlier, the reorganization of the city's debt, which has already been discussed, and amending the city's water rate structure, which we hadn't talked about much. But what we're looking at is a 4.375% increase across the board of the various categories in the water ordinance, as well as a $1 per month capital cost or fixed rate. This will establish a capital improvement fund, which can be used for any event that dollars are needed for the improvement to the 24, as well as other routine-type maintenance, replacement of water lines, similar to what we did on Shady Dell or Skyline and Callahan and some of the areas in the city that are next on the list for replacements. The capital charge results in a $3 per quarter flat fee. It basically doesn't change or get influenced by how much water you use, so I think it would be more palatable to our residents versus a flat, you know, eight and a half or nine percent increase across the board. Looking at the average consumptions for the city, the EPA uses 5,000 per month as an average household consumption. The city's a little higher than that, it's about 6,500 gallons per month, it's kind of the city's average. And based on that, with the new rates in place, we're looking at about an $8.66 per quarter increase to the average customer in the city. This would generate, over a course of a year, a little over $100,000. And obviously, going into effect in July, it's only gonna pick up half of that, or around $50,000 for the year 2014. And I would entertain any other questions you might have on that.
Joe, I do. So I took the eight and three-quarter percent increase that we've experienced from City Youngstown.
Yes.
And applied it to the formula you have here, and it actually comes out to be, in your scenario, instead of $139.31, $141.37. So it actually comes out to be a little bit more using, just using across the board an eight and three-quarter percent.
Right, and it would be actually slightly less than that if you use the graduations, because there's each -- the more you use, the less you pay, basically, in our graduated schedule. But it would be, it'd be pretty close, probably, to your figure, but it would slightly, slightly less if you want an accurate.
Yeah. Just the reasoning why we did the service charge and the 4% is?
Yeah, and again, the reasoning being, over the course of a quarter, we end up with three to five individuals that have a leaky toilet. The incident we just had with Fairway Ford, they had a broken line in a building they didn't use, results in a $7,000 water bill. And, you know, that extra three and a half percent wouldn't be added to that.
Yeah.
The $1 per month was all additional to pay. So it somewhat benefits the customer, paying for only what they use, and again, allows us to build capital in a capital improvement fund to maintain our system.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Good, your end.
And again, you're right in saying the city has been imposing an eight and three-quarter increase over the last five years. The city's only addressed that twice during that five-year period, and we're kind of behind the eight ball in keeping our rate consistent and paying, we're paying Youngstown for the same hundred.
Okay. Mr. Porshadov? I'm sorry, Joe, you have a -- sorry.
More items?
Go ahead.
Sorry. Friday, the city, or actually, the Canfield Rotary hosted another very successful high school civic day here in the city. While visiting the city, the students participated in mock council meeting and afterwards conducted mayor's court. Afterwards, the luncheon, the student mayor, Dan Brown, awarded Canfield Rotary with a proclamation, and our own Canfield mayor provided a proclamation to the past former mayor, Mr. Kay. He was awarded Rotary's 2014 Non-Rotarian Person of the Year. And I think it was a nice gesture, and he had offered the key to the city.
Very good.
I also met with the city's consultant with reference to the Fairway, or Fairview Maple Street Storm Project this week. Another project's moving along nicely. They've got the alignment completed and the design about 80% complete. Final tracings are to be filed with the city on or before May 30th. The proposal is to let bids for the project June 9th. I have a bid opening on the 25th of June and award by July 2nd, providing we get the agreements from the state, which are pretty timely. They usually arrive on or before July 1st. Construction notice to proceed could then be issued after being awarded by council July 9th, and a completion date of October 13th for that project. And looking at their design criteria, they're designing the system for a 10-year event, which would equate to 3.37 inches of rain over a 24-hour period, or 1.36 inches over 30 minutes, or 2.5 inches over a six-hour period. So it kind of gives you a feel for the type of storm. And we, during that, I think there's only been one storm about five years ago that met that criteria, which would basically serve the capacity of the new system. And even with that being said, the line on Maple Street would have some reserve or excess capacity to handle a little beyond those numbers. So I feel confident that unless we get the big one, this system will eliminate the yearly storms that we're having in this area. Also, again, I've received some calls from the folks on Kirk Street. I put in the memo a couple of times, there's a vacant home at 33 Kirk, and I know Chuck and I's had some discussions about this property as well. They're expressing their frustrations, and I don't know what the city can possibly do. The Board of Health has kind of turned the blind eye on it because they're, in their opinion, it's nothing that's affecting public health. The problem lies within the home. Whether it's going to be salvageable or whether it's something that's gonna have to be torn down, neither of us can address that until the ownership issues are taken care of. And my last conversation with the mortgage holder is that there's still some missing information or some signing over of the property from the current owners to the bank. So I don't know, maybe talk to Mark about it and see if there's anything else we can do, but I can only feel for these folks that have to live next to there and tolerate it until we can do something. And lastly, again, I briefly mentioned about the fabric. I'll be putting together the costs on that and get those out in the memo, and I would assume we want to move forward and end up with a decent pavement. The reason for the fabric on North Broad is some of the cracking that's occurred where the old pavement met the new can project up through the new pavement if we don't put this fabric on. And the fabric kind of distributes that activity and causes it to not come through. So it's something that is gonna cost somewhere between $10,000 to $15,000 additional to the project, but I think it would give us an overall. And it's being recommended by MS Consultants and the PSI testing that went out there and looked at the roadway to give us a better service life and longer-lasting run. That's basically all I have this evening.
Great question.
Good.
With regards to the Fairview project, you're indicating a 10-year storm event design. Does that correspond with our subdivision regulations? I was thinking that we may have modified our subdivision regulations to some storm event. I don't remember what year it was.
No, for retention basins, you're correct. We upped that from a 10-year to a 25-year.
Okay, maybe.
Retention, detention. The 10-year is in line with ODOT and the national standards for a storm shelter system.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, Mr. Porshadov?
I will defer my report till executive session to discuss the imminent and pending litigation.
Okay, Mr.?
But I'll be happy to take any questions.
Okay, no questions. Okay, we're gonna ask Mr. Minkler to step up here tonight. We have, this will be the special ceremony, a presentation of the flag, I presume?
Yes.
Okay. You have the floor.
I will stick my name. Bob Minkler, and I live at 81-1 Montgomery Lane, and I'm a member of the Parks Board Commission here in the City of Canfield. And two brief items before I split this. It was a survey done on the playgrounds, and a report will be forthcoming on results from that for council. And we had some activity from a Girl Scout troop that wanted to clean up trails, pick up trash, et cetera. They did that, spent several hours out at Fair Park doing that with. They did that, spent several hours out at Fair Park doing that with the assistance of Green Team providing them materials and whatnot. And they got, they got a kick out of seeing the beaver swimming across the big pond. And there is a Canada goose with a nest that's about four or five foot across out in that pond. So it's very nice to see the wildlife out there flourishing. The main reason I'm here is because I had the really distinct honor to go down to the city of Cambridge for the Tree City Awards Ceremony. This ceremony rotates from city to city, and I have to say that Mr. Whitehouse and I both attended this, we were very impressed with the city, the program they have for their trees and their city, especially since the gymnasium that we were accommodated in for this ceremony, which lasted almost all day, the speakers and so forth, had, was the only remaining surviving part of a school because a tornado had ripped through the center of their town several years ago. And you would never know it. It was remarkable what they had done. Right now, I would like to present the flag for Tree City denoting our 33rd year within the city for receiving the Tree City Award. There again, I should ask, I would like Nancy to join me, because this was for the work done last year, and Nancy was instrumental and vital in doing that. So besides the flag we received, we also got the stickers to put on our...
And I get behind it, and we won't even see it.
We'll keep it high enough.
Oh, God, where would it go?
Stand in front of the mirror, he's always having a place though.
You just see my chin off.
Very nice. Well deserved. Good job.
I wish you now had worn a suit. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Oh, you're going to go this way?
Oh, you're going to do this too? Okay.
We'll be on tape.
You need to go that way. Get behind the podium there.
Hold her up, there you go, there you go.
Okay. Let's fold it properly. I can't, I can't thank you enough for all the time and effort you put into this. Until I, until I got the job I have now, I wasn't really aware of what went into this, but I'm gathering an appreciation of the effort. I would never make it ironing a sheet, I don't.
We got, we got a bonus this year in that they also presented a hat.
Very good.
For Tree City USA. So I will leave this for council to decide who gets to wear it.
Bob, I think, I think it's consensus, why don't you?
You keep it.
You keep that hat. You deserve it. I think it's your hat.
I will keep that.
Well deserved. I commend your group, I really do. Nice job.
Thank you very much, and like I said, it really was an honor to go down there for the city. We, as I said, our 33rd year in a row, and the program that they put together, and I will leave it here for you gentlemen to peruse if you so desire, because it lists all the tree cities, the years they became, they call them classes for those years, and a contest, an art contest from the children down there that they conducted. So I will leave this up here for you to enjoy.
JT has a nice article in the Town Prior, and he has some of the guy right there is Bob Minkler.
And just as a reminder, later this month, April, or May 15th, is our Arbor Day celebration at Hillside.
Hilltop.
Hilltop. Say Hillside. At Hilltop Elementary. It'll be at 9:30. So we appreciate your attendance there, and I know the school has something, something planned, so keep that on your calendars and we would enjoy seeing you there.
Thank you again. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank the Parks Recreation Cemetery Board for all of their hard work. I think their board is an example of why term limits should not be extended within the city of Camp Hill. Granted, they've been passed and all of those kinds of things, but the activities conducted by the Parks Recreation Cemetery Board are conducted because of people that care and want to see these continue. To maintain Tree City, yeah, you can do that with new people coming on, but you know, you get a certain dedication by those individuals, and they're going to do the follow-through on those kinds of programs and that kind of thing. And if you take a look at the time that probably went into the city of Cambridge's presentation to first of all bid to get a tree, to be a presenter for the Tree City program, and the plan, all of that, I don't know how many years it takes, but I would anticipate that it is several. And I'm guessing they're planned out two or three years at any rate. You get people that serve and want to participate in that, and then what happens is because of term limits, you know, those people are not there any longer. So if Camp Hill wanted to do that, and you had dedicated people, you know, they may get this stretched out three years and had an opportunity to do that, but then they're not here to reap the benefits of that. So in that regard, I think it's an example of, at least at the local level, why term limits are not the positive thing to have for the city of Camp Hill. Granted, the voters have voted on that, and I respect that, but just my comment with regard to that.
I agree, Mr. Tisch, very good, well said. Okay, item seven is under recognition of persons bizarre and distinctive for council. They ask you to step forward this evening to the podium and state your name and address clearly for the record. Keep your comments as brief as possible. I will be giving, I will begin the names as I have on the list here this evening too. Michelle Hannaford.
Hi, Michelle Hannaford, 151 Chapel Lane. We've lived at Chapel Lane, the address there, for 10 years, it'll be 10 years in June, and we've always had a problem during rain, that it started off as our driveway getting flooded into the garage. And over the years, it has just, it's at the point now where, last week, I'm a teacher, I'm at school, I teach children with severe developmental disabilities, and I'm looking out the window saying, I'm going to go home, and my whole garage is just going to be flooded. I mean, I, we can't go anywhere. Back in August, contacted Joe, and he, you know, he came out very fast, he talked to our neighbors who will speak next, and you know, we discussed, you know, the options that he said there, and, and over the long winter, of course, we couldn't do anything about it. But I actually have some pictures that I brought that I would like for you to see. Our house is the third house, so we get, it involves three houses, we get everything that comes from the first two. And I brought pictures that I would like for you to see so that you know what we have to live with when it rains. That I took from my porch.
Stay here while we... If I could just peel them apart.
Mine's TV. That's from my garage. We cannot leave anything out at all, nothing. And our driveway gets everything coming from the other two houses.
Is this the stream going right out?
That's our neighbor's house who are here, that comes from their house, it comes right down through, and it just, and that's just from the side, it doesn't, that's not including what comes from the street. That's on the side of the house. And then this right here is actually where there's no curb, which Joe talked about, and I don't know what the name of this is that comes out of the street, I forget, but it's, there's nothing there, it is broken, it's cracked, it does not work. It comes into our grass and down our driveway. And we're just about tired of it.
Let's see what Joe means by the road here.
There's no curb there, and over the winter, I have current pictures on my phone, there's nothing there. We, my husband has built up the bottom of our driveway with blacktop, and also before our garage with blacktop to try and keep in, it's at the point, nothing, nothing helps.
Joe, would the curb, would the curb help, better curb, higher curb?
Well, that would be one of the alternatives, would be just to replace the curb during that section to just move the water further down to the cul-de-sac where there are catch basins that were collected.
Okay, okay. I would say that wasn't, when it was ground town, it was round up, it wasn't round down up to where the curb, that's the curb height now.
We don't have any going into our driveway area at all. There's nothing there now, it's just completely flat.
The curb needs to work on, obviously, I think it will also matter.
Okay.
Joe, I just, with that, it just doesn't seem like that's enough.
No, no, I'm looking at that.
It doesn't seem like it's enough.
Well, again, you know, there's, I don't know if there's, the three homes that I've been accustomed to look like the only ones that are situated where the house is lower than the road. So when it hops the curb, it follows that path towards their homes. If you were to put that curb in place and you direct the water down the street, there's enough elevation that it would get past the homes and then collect in the cul-de-sac at the bottom where there are three basins, I believe, it can accept it. The, putting the curbs in and maybe a skewed catch basin that would, the curb would direct the water into that basin would probably be an even better fix, and would be, again, somewhere in that range of around a $10,000 to $15,000 improvement. The grinding down the road, getting it to where it was originally, and where they would have curb revealed, you're probably looking at probably a $50,000 to $100,000 type.
Yeah, but we can build that, we can build the curb up.
Right, because the water right now is being directed more so to the south side of the street, you know, like putting that curb in the areas. We can look at it closer to make sure that, you know, there aren't other houses involved or even a...
And I noticed too, though, I was out, when I was taking pictures, the current pictures, the front of our house, the curbs are basic, there's a whole section that they're almost level with the street now. They're gone.
And that, yeah, I didn't mention that, that kind of adds fuel to the fire as well, their own downspouts that at one time came through the curb, are now just upended and add to that water.
Where's that water going from the downspouts, Joe?
It comes out to the street and then just back into their yards.
Yeah. Because there's nothing to hold there.
So I would appreciate anything that you can do for us, because like I said, this is 10 years. I was born and raised in Camp Hill, I've lived here my whole life, and this is just getting old. So it really is.
I have not been up there to see this firsthand, but your pictures describe exactly what you're talking about, and I would think as a city, we have a responsibility to at least fix this curb.
At least that, just that's going to help.
In my opinion, yeah.
I agree.
Shouldn't be like that.
That curb needs to appear, there's no question, that might, that might be enough to alleviate your problem. I'm hoping it's going to be enough.
Is most of the water coming off of the street? Because I noticed here in the one picture, it looks like you're getting something from the neighbor and that kind of thing.
The pollen, bot- pollen, I'm pronouncing their name, that comes from their house, but they're getting it from the third neighbor who's above them. So it's, it's just a trickle, and we're at the bottom of it, so we get everything.
Okay, but, but in this situation...
That's their front yard, yes.
In this situation, is it just surface runoff off of the street coming down? Because it sounds like, it looks like you've got two issues. You've got issues coming from the higher elevation, the houses above you, as well as water coming in the driveway, correct?
Right.
Okay.
It's coming from both, and I'm sure Mary could explain where they're getting, you know, getting it from better.
Very good, thank you.
Did you want to keep these?
You want to keep these.
Okay. Fred and Mary, pollen plates, support.
Good evening, we're Fred and Mary Pollen, and we live at 161 Chapel Lane, and we've lived there since 1990. After the, after the last repaving of Chapel Lane, we started noticing more water spilling over from our neighbor, from our neighbor up above us, you know, they are, he is at a higher elevation than we are, and it comes down into our driveway, and then from our driveway, it flows down both through the yard and out toward, out toward the street, down to Hannaford's at 151. Now, and are those pictures still available for a moment? I'm sorry.
Okay.
So I guess I'm kind of reluctantly joining, or stepping into the territory of squeaky wheel here by addressing you folks. Okay, this is the, this particular photograph here is the, is my drain at the curb, and I know that you've, and this is, this is what washes, and this one is what washes down from our house to our neighbor's.
It's come up your side yard, correct? Coming up your side yard, you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
But it, it comes from my neighbor down into my driveway. Now, I have photographs, but I put them, like a big fool, I put them on a disc thinking someone would have a laptop here tonight. But I can, I can, I can print them out and bring them over, make them available to you if you'd like.
Okay, and they help him too also.
No, Joe, give it to Joe.
Yeah.
So...
I'm sorry.
But as you can see here, in fact, there's less grass along this strip here now than there was when this photograph was taken last summer, or last, last fall. I've lost a good bit of my front yard, unfortunately, and, okay, we, but, but we also have water that gathers in our driveway, and it's, it's killed some, it's killed some plants in front of our, some shrubbery and landscaping in front of our house. So we too would like some water abatement. One of the, one of the ideas that Mr. Marino had that we like in particular is the idea of, is possibly a catch basin of some kind, in addition to, you know, perhaps, you know, regrading the street a little bit. The idea of simply building up the curb is not going to address the problem of either my drainage pipe or my neighbor's drainage pipes being able to pass water into the street. In other words, if all you do is build up the curb, our pipes are still buried.
Correct. And the water's flowing into our driveways from the street, and then from the driveways over our property, so we have the two waterfalls coming down the paved street and over our property, but it's coming from the grading of the, of the street that's pushing all that water south to 171, then 161 and 151 Chapel Lane. So we're just asking that you could please, you know, reconsider something that could be done and please follow through, because it's been, we're getting progressively worse.
Yeah. I mean, and, and you know, we've got, you know, we've got water problems in the back too, but I'm not sure you guys can do much about that. If we can get you to, get you to do something with the front, that would be a big help.
Yeah, actually, their, their situation carries over into the rear yards of the properties on Hilltop Boulevard that have had backyard flooding as a result of the water passing through there.
We did, we did consult with a, with a ditching and drainage expert, and one of the suggestions he made, you know, that we, you know, that we might have to do would be to put a French drain between our, our house and our neighbor's house at the property line, and then run about a six-inch pipe out to the street, which I don't think anybody really wants us to do, and he didn't, he doesn't really want to do it either. He said it would be far better to be able to tap into a catch basin somewhere, either, either, either one of the normal catch basins that you have along the side of the street, or something that's even out in, you know, we don't, we don't know where the pipes are on our street, but there's always the possibility of having something out in the middle of the street, like you do over on Dartmouth or on, or on Shadydale. out in the middle of the street, uh, like you do over on Dartmouth or on, or on Shadydale.
And, uh, I think when we were out there, the storms who are on Chapel is actually on the west side of the street, so we would, we talked about happening either bore under the street or do a cross over if you did the basin.
Pardon? And, uh, okay, if you want this, this exhibit B, this is drainage. We have all pictures labeled.
So we just would appreciate your consideration in trying to find a solution for our problem.
Thank you so much for coming in. Hold on, hold on just a second.
Yep.
I'm, uh, ten years in Canfield, and I did thirty-two years in Boardman, and I had a very similar problem at my property in Boardman, and, uh, I put in French drains and, uh, surrounded by gravel, because that'll eventually fill in with dirt, and solved the problem. However, it cost me six thousand dollars to do that, but I promise you, I will go out and look at this property with Joe, and anything that I know from my Boardman situation, I will share with Joe.
Sure. I mean, our drains seem to be functioning. I mean, we're getting, you know, we're getting drainage out, out to the street, but, uh, again, you've got, you've got, you know, you've got it, it jumps up over, you know...
It's like a waterfall comes out because it's so low.
It jumps up over the curb, onto the grass, and then down into Hanaford's driveway. Plus, we've also got what comes, what comes down from, uh, our neighbor up above, you know, it's, it's, you know, because, because after the road was graded, his driveway is now lower than the road, it's coming straight into his driveway, down through his yard, spilling over into our yard and driveway, and then all the way on down to the neighbor. The people that live down here'll get it.
I personally will take a look, I don't know that I have an answer, I can't promise you that, but I, I have some experience.
Okay. Good enough.
Mr. McKeon?
Good evening, I'm Frank McKeon, I reside at two twenty Glenview. Just a few items tonight. Number one, has there been any thought given to posting minutes of the boards and commissions on the website?
Now, as you can see this evening, there were some corrections to those minutes that had to be addressed. Again, prefer to do that after the minutes have been approved.
Okay, because we've taken some good steps getting this meeting on there, and certainly the boards and commissions would be a plus for all the residents. Number two, let's talk about the city's debt obligations. According to my calculations, as of January one, two thousand and fourteen, the city had one million, two hundred thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars and ten cents, and ten, ten cents in dollars in outstanding debt among five different items. Our payments on these issues in two thousand and fourteen will be two hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars. For the second time, there is an ordinance proposing the city borrow an additional one million, two hundred and forty thousand dollars to restructure the city's debt and finance proposed new building improvements. Fortunately, the issue did not pass the first time around. Now, it's true that a portion, approximately seven hundred and forty thousand, was to restructure a loan at a lower rate. The remainder, up to five hundred thousand, was for building improvements, specifically the police department. In my opinion, the issue is poorly presented. The refinancing of a loan at a lower rate is a no-brainer, and probably could pass if it stood on its own. However, council chooses to bundle the building addition with the refinance issue. It looks like they're trying to ram the issue through. Sort of reminds me of the shenanigans in the federal government earmarks. I do not know if the police department issue, uh, is really needed, or if it justifies a large expenditure. I understand that the issue has come up over the past several years, if so, why don't we set aside dollars each year until we have a good, a good portion of the monies and do not have to incur such a large, uh, expenditure? In the name of fiscal responsibility, this ordinance must not pass as written. Next item, number three, Redgate Farm is a large part of our outstanding debt. Is there anything happening to relieve this load? Okay, moving on.
Was that a question?
That was a question. It has a question mark here.
There, there's always ongoing discussions, right? And it's not, perhaps is clear sometimes as it appears, but there is movement, and there is discussion, and there is strategy.
Uh, just a few comments in regard to term limits. Let me point out that these recently passed ordinances provide for three-year term limits, two, or a total of six years on any board or commission. That's a substantial amount of time for anybody to be able to contribute significantly. Uh, yet all, the ordinances also provided for one person to be exempt from term limits, which can give some continuity to the boards and commissions. In addition, the, the term limits are staggered, not everybody leaves at the same time. Term limits are a good idea, it allows many citizens to be able to participate. These are not lifetime appointments, let's get people involved. Finally, I'm requesting that all of tonight's agenda be given a second reading. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Joe, you'd like to comment on the one comment that was made, dealing with, uh, being fiscally responsible. And I think, in my opinion, the city is being fiscally responsible. If I were to privately look at doing an improvement to my own household, or buying a house for that matter, I would wanna do it at a time when the interest rate was the lowest it's been in decades. And, uh, again, this project is something we just dreamt up and figured, let's find something to spend money on, it's been something that I was, been advised of, that's been in the works for the last ten or fifteen years, and the cost of that has probably gone up ten times from if they were to build it ten, ten years ago versus what it is today. The interest rate, just a one percent difference in interest over the course of the loan can eat up close to a million dollars. Why wouldn't you, if you're gonna do a project like this, and maybe feel it's needed, why wouldn't you do it when the interest rate is as low as it's been in decades, versus waiting five years when you have the money, but then you're gonna pay, give it away in a higher cost of investment?
What I was trying to make is, why did you bundle this together? They're two separate issues. Let's handle them one at a time, so they're ramming it through.
They're both, they're both general fund issues, which, why would you have two separate loans when you can combine them as one?
Because they're two separate issues, that's my opinion.
Thanks, Mr. McKeon.
Frank, before you leave, your use of the phrase "ramming it through," I thought I expounded on that, apparently not real clear. I, we're revisiting that tonight in one form or another, and it's brought up by a person who was opposed to it, because he wanted the full input of all of council. That's healthy. That's healthy stuff, that's not ramming anything through.
Bundling it, to me, appears like you're trying to ram it through.
Well, well, Frank, that's your opinion, that's your, so...
That's what I'm here for.
All right, yeah, I know, we understand that. Mr. Tisch?
Um, yeah, I've, I've got a comment, um, you have an opinion with regard to term limits, I have an opinion with regard to term limits, our opinions are different. I believe at the local government level, term limits are not an appropriate vehicle. I think that the voters are intelligent enough to decide who is doing a good job, and who isn't doing a good job, and change when it's necessary. Now, in deference to, um, your activities as far as getting that passed by the electorate, I understand that that passed, I'm supporting that at this point, but my opinion differs from yours.
That's what we're here for.
Well said.
Well said, well said. Okay, under Old Business, item A, as provisioned in section four point zero five, the charter to city Canfield, I move the council's best requirement of full reading of proposed ordinance, and authorized by its title only. Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Tisch, discussion? Every now and then, clerk please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Morve?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I have an ordinance amending ordinance nineteen seventy-three dash forty-four, rezoning lot fourteen ninety-eight, Air Ground Boulevard, from S, Special District, to B three, Highway Commercial District, and I move for passage.
Go second.
Second.
Mr. Dragish, discussion? Clerk please call the roll.
Excuse me, ma'am.
Go ahead.
The motion you made was for title only, or one reading?
One reading.
One reading, but not title, you needed to make a second motion for title only.
Well, we already read that the first time, it's the second reading, correct? This is the first one in, under, under Old Business, so we had a first reading before, this is the second reading, correct?
The motion made was for the one reading, right?
You're right, that's correct, so I should be saying the one, by title, one motion too. My mistake, it shouldn't be...
I'm not trying to clarify...
No, Mark, you're, you're involved too also. All right, this would be for the, uh, this would be for title only, my mistake, that should've been just for title only. Correct, okay. As provisioned section four point zero five, the charter to city Canfield, I move that council's best requirement of full reading of the proposed ordinance and authorized by its title only. Do you have a second on that?
Second.
Mr. Tisch, uh, discussion? Every now and then, clerk please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Okay, and we already, you wanna read it again?
I'll read it again.
Read it again, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have an ordinance authorizing, I'm sorry, I, Mr. Chairman, I have an ordinance amending ordinance nineteen seventy-three dash forty-four, rezoning lot fourteen ninety-eight, Air Ground Boulevard, from S, Special District, to B three, Highway Commercial District, I move for passage.
Okay. Discussion, clerk please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
The second of that was, Mr. Dragish.
Oh, Mr. Tisch.
Okay, number, where's in that one? Number?
Two thousand and fourteen dash eighteen.
Thank you, and I apologize for that, mistake there too. All right, under New Business here too, we have a motion to reconsider, okay? So this is...
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Um, I would like to present a motion to reconsider, um, the motion of which was defeated on April sixteenth. Um, it was a motion entitled an ordinance authorizing the city manager to borrow up to one million, two hundred and forty thousand dollars to restructure the city's current debt and finance proposed new building improvements. Chairman, I move that that, uh, motion be approved.
Go second.
Second.
Second. I am mayor. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, um, I bring this, um, um, ordinance up for, or this motion up for reconsideration because this was defeated, um, in a two-to-two vote. Um, I was on the prevailing side, I mean, I voted, uh, against the motion. Um, I believe this, uh, ordinance is significant, or significant enough, um, to have all members of council vote on the ordinance, whether they are in favor of or against, and in light of the fact that we had one member of council absent, I think it's, uh, only appropriate to allow them to have an opportunity to vote on the ordinance.
And just for clarification, this motion, Mr. Tisch, is just to entertain this ordinance once again?
This is a motion to reconsider the ordinance, and in my opinion, if the motion to reconsider passes, all that would do would be to then, we would then have to read the ordinance again and vote upon the ordinance a second time. Doesn't mean the ordinance passes.
And if the motion to reconsider does not pass, then this item does not appear on the agenda, is this right?
That's right.
Okay, cool, thank you. All right, with that said, clerk please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Am I, yes, your call. Yes or no? No.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
No.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
No.
Motion does not pass. All right, we're going to B now. Uh, since A did not pass, all right, say A, B, thank you. As provisioned in sections four point zero five, the charter to city Canfield, I move that dispense requirement of two readings of proposed ordinance and authorize adoption of the sample's first reading. Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Morve, discussion? Clerk, clerk please, uh, done, clerk please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. As provisioned in section four point zero five, the charter to city Canfield, I move that council's best requirement of full reading of proposed ordinance and authorized by its title only. Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Morve, discussion? Every now and then, clerk please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, Donnie?
Yeah.
Um, B, an ordinance amending chapter nine two seven of the Code of Five ordinances of Canfield, Ohio regarding water rates for two thousand and fourteen.
Okay, I'm sorry, okay, did, second, thank you, Mr. Morve, discussion?
Joe, when will this go in effect?
July first.
Okay. Clerk please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Okay, item C is a motion to appoint. Okay. As provisioned section four point zero five, the charter to city Canfield, I move that dispense requirement of two readings of proposed motion and authorize adoption of the sample's first reading. Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Dragish, the discussion? Every now and then, clerk please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Okay, and as provisioned, as provisioned in section four point zero five, the charter to city Canfield, I move the council's best requirement of full reading of a proposed, you know what, that's, as a motion, one, I'm sorry. Okay, then, all right, then we call for a vote then too, I guess, correct?
I don't, I don't receive any questions.
All right, well, I, I did it again too, that was a motion too.
Motion by title only should be a vote.
That was a title only too also, I'm sorry again. Will we change this thing like we really got this?
Actually, no.
Okay. As provisioned section four point zero five, the charter to city Canfield, I move that we council's best requirement of full reading of proposed ordinance, I'm sorry, motion,